And I had suggested that there be a tiered approach to where noise such as lawn equipment, and we had some discussion about lawn equipment. And that type of noise, as well as construction, stop at six o'clock and maybe hot tub noise or other noise associated with people just hanging out and having fun to be at 10 o'clock. And also, I had said that other jurisdictions train and use volunteers to read the meters, and then they report their findings to the city. And that was in response to Mr. Chandler saying it's very difficult to enforce noise by, I think he was mentioning decibels at the time, because he was talking about a meter and it had to be calibrated and all of that. So, those are just things that I know I have experienced in my past that have worked. Those are my suggestions.
Do you want to get a read back on the amendment to the minutes?
In general, how you were suggesting that on page four of those minutes after, in the paragraph relating to noise enforcement, that you suggested a tiered approach to noise enforcement considering the type of noise. And also, you commented that other communities use volunteers to read decibel meters and assist with enforcement? They make their findings known to the city. I mean, it's something to be considered, is what I was suggesting.
Is the rest of the commission clear on the amendment? We have a motion to approve as amended the planning commission city council minutes February 2nd.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now, we have public comments on non-agenda items or matters not involving a public hearing. Please limit comments to three minutes per speaker. Speaker should keep in mind you are being broadcast on live TV. And we have Wick Hayes. Please come up.
I'm Nikki Hayes from Lincoln City.
Nikki?
Can't read my writing. That's okay. I have a couple of passouts, and Kate said I could bring them to her, and she would make sure that you have them. I am here to talk about my favorite subject, Fernwood. Employee housing, workforce housing. We need workforce housing, and we own property, and the state has money to build it. And I spoke to Mr. Townsend, and he said if I could find a builder, he'd be open to doing that. I can find a builder. So, I'm putting a call out right now to everybody at home to please, any builders out there, call Mr. Townsend. How's that?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. I have two passouts for you. My daughter lives in Aspen, and that's a tourist town, obviously, and they have beautiful workforce housing. She and her husband live in a thousand-square-foot town home, two bedrooms, one bath. It's not fancy, but it is very attractive. It has the Chalet Mountain look to it. I think we can build this in Fernwood, and it would be attractive, and our employees would have a nice place to live. Now, we can get financing, and they would actually buy these homes. So, if we get down payment assistance, which there's programs out there that would do that, so when they buy it, the money would go back to the city. So, here's the plan. I have a plan. We have the property, we get a loan from the state, we build this, we sell them to our employees, and that's just not city employees, but people who live and work in Lincoln City. We have a down payment assistance plan and a loan plan. These would go below market, and the employees would buy it, the money goes back to the city to do something else with it. So, then developing the rest of the Cascadehead, you have the money to do that. So, that is my plan. And everything I've read on goals and land use says that we have to have public involvement and public meetings. I don't really want to read all of this because it's not fun, but it's what it says. And I just found out there's a meeting on the 29th for those people out there to discuss, again, Fernwood. It's not on the calendar yet, so anybody who wants to attend that meeting, it's probably one you can't talk at, but you can listen, and that's going to be on the 29th between 3:00 and 5:00. That's my three minutes.
Hold on, hold on. There may be questions.
Oh, okay.
Are there questions? I have a question, who we, about one minute ago, you were talking about we can build...
We being city people?
The city? The city doesn't, my understanding is the city doesn't do construction?
No, but we can hire a contractor to do it, or engage a contractor to build it.
And we also have a request for proposals out now?
Put out a request for qualifications regarding...
Qualifications, ask you.
For people to be interested in purchasing and developing the property. We got two responses on that, and we're in the process of evaluating that and going forward with next steps on that.
And it was also my understanding that something like 20% of the purchase price of the whole area was urban development money?
I think about 20% was, for the purchase price for the villages of Cascadehead as a whole, came from our Affordable Housing Fund.
What would that do for a contractor who was building affordable and who was building affordable housing in that area? How would that help a contractor?
Well, one of the, I don't know that it helps them, but what it is resulting in, the city is saying when we develop or have the properties developed like Fernwood should include affordable housing, workforce housing at some level. And we're, as I said, we are going to be working with developers to try to work that in, and that can affect the price of the land that we get, and we recognize that and accept it and encourage it, the fact that we want to get affordable housing into the mix.
I heard the suggestion also that we could offer incentives for a developer who is going to put in affordable housing. Anything like that in the...
Actually, you'll get a little bit more of that tonight, but we have, like, for instance, in our planning and development ordinance, we have a 10% density bonus. You get 10% more houses than you ordinarily would if of that 10%, half of them are for affordable housing. We're also, we've done things like allowed mixed-use development in all commercial areas of the city. We've allowed accessory dwelling units in residential areas, so you get two dwelling units on an individual lot. Cottage clusters, which gives you double the density for small houses. So, those kinds of things. We're doing what we can in terms of incentives to get people to try to do that, lowering the land costs for those last few things. But also, if you remember, the last city council meeting, they discussed our system development charges, and actually will be dropping that with respect to water and sewer by about $4,000 per pot. So, that should also help.
Follow-up question on that. Affordable housing, you know, we use the term. Do we have a definition for what qualifies or constitutes affordable housing? Rentals versus...
The city hasn't adopted a formal definition of that. It's usually related to some proportion of the median income for the community, median family income. In Lincoln City, that's, I think, about $34,000 per family. And typically, we say that if somebody, what we're using as a working number, making 80% of median family income, if a house is affordable to somebody making 80%, then we would consider it affordable housing. And affordability, of course, depends on the percentage of your total income that goes towards housing. So, where you're doing 50% or more, clearly, that's not affordable. People have to eat, too, and, you know, clothes, transportation, and so on. I think the working thing is around 30% of your income would normally go for housing, and so if it's affordable to somebody making 80% of the median, then that would be considered affordable housing or workforce housing. It's not subsidized housing, it's not Section 8 housing or whatever, it's not what we're talking about. Talking about somebody who has a job and just wants a place they can afford to buy and afford to rent. We do definitely have a shortage of those.
And that would apply to the cost of buying or the cost of renting? That number would be...
Right.
Nikki mentioned, and I read in Lincoln, I think it was the Lincoln County News, but something about that there's money available at the state grants or some other type of money for exactly this purpose, because Oregon is having such a difficult time with providing affordable housing. In Portland, they're looking at putting limits on how much people can charge to keep the housing rental costs down. And so, it's a big enough issue that the state recently did do something. I can't remember the specifics. Do you know anything about that?
I know there's a grant program, it's, I don't know the details on it. As I recall, it's a relatively small pot of money, it's like $15 million statewide. I think there is a rural piece of that that maybe increases our chances, or maybe a different pot of money. We're looking into those kinds of things as well.
That's what I remember, too. There was some for more, larger metropolitan, like the Portland area, and then for more rural, but that's all I remember. But I have a question for you, Nikki.
Yes.
You said that there was a meeting to discuss this on the 29th?
Yes, from 3 to 5.
And you said it was here?
Yes. Mr. Townsend was talking about it.
Oh, okay.
I can tell you about that. On the 29th, the city council has a workshop on villages of Cascadehead master planning process. And I believe that included in that, we will describe where we are on Fernwood and what's happening. Fernwood will be a piece of it, but it's about the villages as a whole. It's at 3:00 here.
The format of city council work extension?
City council workshop.
No public input?
Right.
Can we, as county, as planning commission, or if there is a percentage of affordable housing, is there any way that we can make the city have a percentage of affordable housing by a certain time?
With the city's property, yes, we can clearly do that. Inclusionary zoning, which anybody that develops has to have a certain percentage of affordable housing, is illegal in Oregon right now, although the legislature is meeting about exactly that issue right now, and the law may change, but for now, it's illegal.
Just a caveat, Richard's correct, they are considering it, but there are exceptions in the prohibition to inclusionary zoning, so you can negotiate for it in, for example, a development agreement. You can provide incentives for it, so there is some ability to do it. It's just you can't impose it.
Did the two RFPs we got for Fernwood address the affordable housing issue in their plans?
The, what we asked them, asked for was the qualifications, basically, can you build a residential development? Both of them, and we made clear that we wanted affordable housing in it, both of them have, you know, shown their willingness to include affordable housing. One of them explicitly proposed this teaming with Lincoln Community Land Trust or Lincoln County, Lincoln Community Land Trust, County, Lincoln County Land Trust. So, one of our major goals in this was to have affordable housing in it, not necessarily the whole thing, but have some in it so that we start chipping away...
How does Lincoln County Land Trust work? How does that...
They can have land that let someone build on, and then you sell the house, or the trust keeps the land. Or they can, another way, I'm not quite sure exactly what their setup is, but also you can have things that the buyer owns the land and the improvements. And when they sell it, that's great, but they don't get, you know, the high increase in it, so they have to keep it.
Which we sold at a relatively lower than market value, perhaps?
Still can make a profit on it. I'm not, again, I'm not quite sure exactly what models, if there's just one model where they own the land or what.
I just have a follow-up. The idea that Nikki brought about where her daughter lives in Aspen, which, if you've been there, that's pretty touristy, but inexpensive. But the idea, and I don't know, maybe this is a question for the other, Richard, but the idea of the city building, is it, it was probably joint, right? A city and...
It was a bond issue.
Oh, I see.
They put a bond issue, and then they built it, and then they sold it to the employees.
And then the employee, and then that paid them back?
And they administered it. So, now, of course, you know, as you have more employees, they have to do a lottery, more or less, to get them. And they have some three bedrooms and two bedrooms, and once somebody is selling it, you go back in the lottery, and you get a certain appreciation, but not market value. So, the properties always stay in the affordable range.
That's a good idea. Is that some model that we, Lincoln City, could look at? I mean, when city councils having their work session on the 29th, is that, I mean, that sounds like...
The council can do what they want to do with their own property, and certainly, the property haven't been purchased with affordable housing funds. The city's committed to doing something on that property now. Does the city want to look into borrowing money in order to build affordable housing? Again, I don't think we are in the business of building, because when we build things, remember, prevailing wage rates all kick in, and it gets all gets more expensive, so...
Right, and that's why I was wondering if there's a partnership, like, with the developer and the city, that kind of a thing, so...
Public-private partnerships are ways in which we can accomplish things that could be cheaper by a private party than if we did.
Sounds like a better idea. Thanks, Nikki.
Any further questions? Thank you very much, Nikki.
Thank you for your time.
Are there any other public comments? Final orders, resolutions, written communications, we have unscheduled public hearings, deliberations, unscheduled, old business, unscheduled. We are on to new business. Richard, the work session discussion on proposed ordinance amendments scheduled for hearings in March.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, you have, in your next meeting, there'll be three ordinances that are coming before you, and so that you're not feeling quite so overwhelmed and inundated by them, I thought it'd be a good idea to just sort of go over what the issues are and why they're, why we're doing it. I'm waiting for the, it's coming up, okay. I'm going to go over some of them, and Deb will go over another. First...
Richard, what was that?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Here we go.
Done? You want to move over to...
First, it relates to flashing signs, and this sign is an example of it. The flashing part is the, where it says Vitamin World, and this is on the mall, outlet mall sign. Flashing signs is just, it's the term we use in the ordinance, but it's also called changing image signs. So, the amendment is, the current law allows them to change once an hour. It was changed not too long ago to once an hour. Before that, it was once a day, and we decided that wasn't enough, so we proposed change, we changed it to once an hour. The proposal is to let it change once per minute now. It sort of came up in the context of the outlet malls, where they want to have a clock on it, just a digital clock, and you can't do that because it changes once a minute. And if you change it once an hour, it's not a very accurate clock. So, there will be, there is a proposed amendment that would allow changing once a minute. It requires a fairly rapid change, doesn't allow full video and that kind of thing. It's the same standard, everything's the same as what we have now, except that we change once a minute instead of once an hour would be allowed. And there's another proposed provision we're talking about on initiation of zoning ordinance amendments. And that just means getting the mall rolling. So, initiate, I want to highlight initiation. It's not imposing, it's initiating. Right now, current law says that proposed changes can come from the city council, planning commission, property owners, or a Lincoln City resident. What it doesn't say is that I can do it, it doesn't say explicitly that I can initiate anything. So, this is just sort of a housekeeping change to make it clear that the planning director also can initiate changes. And I want to emphasize, this is initiating, it's just drafting something up and bringing it up. There still would be public notice, still hearings at the planning commission, still hearings at the city council. It's just adding one more piece to that list where you have the city council, planning commission, property owner, resident, or the planning director.
Do we want to talk about any of these?
Yeah, jump in any time on these. As far as I'm concerned, I don't, it's your meeting, Bruce.
I, I, go ahead. I was just thinking about, the planning director is the citizen, so you can initiate something, but as the planning director.
Right, we're just trying to make it really clear that, I mean, I've been doing it for years, but I just want to make sure that it's explicit.
Doing it for years? Okay. Would you mind backing up then, so I could see who that list was again, of our current ordinance? City Council and Planning Commission, those are the two that I knew about, and I guess property owner, if they wanted to change...
Their own property.
Okay, so that's anything to do with the zoning or mapping or anything like that, right? Okay, yeah.
The property owners can initiate things about their own property.
Okay.
Resident can propose a change, a text change to the ordinances or to the planning.
Would you have an example of what, of when and why you would do it versus what we already have up there on that list?
Ask the question again?
I guess just simply, why would you want that?
Why would I want?
Yeah, why are you asking for this?
Well, we can recognize changes that might be, might be good ideas, and rather than having to go to the planning commission and say, please, can we have permission to do this, to initiate this, or to the city council to say, please, can we have permission to initiate this? I could just initiate it automatically. And it still goes to the planning commission, it still goes to the city council?
I guess the reason I kind of like it the way it is, no offense intended, but is that with the city council and with the planning commission, at least, those are more of public, more public, if you initiate something, that kind of will wake up some people who may be interested in listening, rather than jumping right to hearing if one is needed, which it would be if you're changing the ordinance.
Any, those four, if they were to initiate a change, it would have to come before council or the commission, correct?
Right.
As a hearing.
And it would still have to happen if the director, the community development director, it would be the same process?
Exactly. Be no change in process at all.
But this step would be missing, I mean, or me, because if we were to, if the planning commission were going to initiate something, we would have a discussion as we're having today, and we would talk about what, whether to initiate or not initiate, which kind of generally, kind of, like you said, gets the ball rolling. And the difference, I see, is that that discussion would happen prior to when, all of a sudden, if you're a member of, if you're a citizen out there, all of a sudden, you have a hearing you need to worry about. I mean, it just, it just takes one step out of the process that I can see, as far as the public knows what's happening.
If that was the process we followed, yes, that would be the case, but also, I just want to say, the property owner or a resident, all they're going to do is file something with the planning department that initiates it, and the first anyone will hear about it is when they get either the mailed notice or read the notice in the newspaper of the upcoming hearing.
Richard? These will be coming up?
Yes.
So, we'll have this discussion again, I'm sure.
Can I ask a question? You are a resident of Lincoln City, right?
Yeah, yeah, and, yeah, I could hang my hat on that, but it...
So, you could, right now, initiate them and just say, I'm not doing it as planning director, I'm doing it as a Lincoln City resident?
Probably have to pay $2,500 to do that, or $1,000.
Well, you indicated all the reason.
There's a fee as well as a requirement to include findings in your application, which when it's city-initiated, we generally don't, we're not subject to the same rules. There's an exemption for city-initiated.
Okay.
Do you want to amplify on that? Why are we not subject to the same regulations?
Well, we are, we adopt the findings at the end, but when they submit their application, they need to have, rather than have Richard do all their work for them, they're required to have someone, a professional planner, usually, put together an application and demonstrate the consistency of the proposed amendment with the comprehensive plan and state-by-planning goals. Rather than have Richard, you know, there's a, sometimes there's a desire to have the city planning department be your planner as opposed to the reviewer. So, when the city is reviewing something submitted by a private party, it needs to maintain its role as the reviewing body, not necessarily the advocate. Richard could call himself to the stand, so to speak, and testify in favor, he'd be very schizophrenic if he needed to do that every time.
Sorry, Richard, you're just a planning director.
Then, there's another proposed amendment relates to what we're calling administrative adjustments. And this arose most recently in the Rose End context, where in the county, the planning department has the authority to grant what amounts to a minor variance. Under the city ordinances, we don't have that. What we're proposing is that the planning director be authorized to make minor adjustments to dimensional standards, and up to 12 inches, so, or 15% of the required setback, whichever is less. And up to 12 inches, so, or 15% of the required setback, whichever is less. Can't be in advance of construction. In other words, you can't come in and say, I wanna have, I wanna get a building permit and I want to, I wanna have my setbacks reduced by 12 inches. No, that's not gonna be, you gotta you gotta come in with a plan that meets the setbacks. The idea is that at some point, it could be discovered that there's a mistake has been made and the foundation was put six inches too far to one side or the other and discovered that it's a violation. They come back then and say, can I have an adjustment here, please? And just be able to deal with that. There can't be in advance of construction. It's not a right. It's basically a way of, it's gotta be small, must correct or avoid a non-compliance issue that's discovered after construction has started. And it can't be materially detrimental to the purposes of the zone. And discretionary decision, which means it's an appealable decision, it's not a ministerial nondiscretionary decision that can't be appealed. So, it's appealable to the planning commission and the city council, both granting and denying it, it would be appealable. If it's something the planning director is not comfortable making or feels like it's of enough significance, it can be referred to the planning commission for a hearing. And even if it's denied, the applicant could then also go to the planning commission for a variance, if they believe they would be advantageous to do that.
Richard, can I ask a question? The house that was recently looking for a change in Rhodes End was off by, I think, six inches or something like that, depending on 21-foot-high third.
Right.
Would this have come into play on that house, on that property?
Would that have what?
Come into play possibly on that house.
It could have come into play. Wouldn't necessarily have gotten granted, but it could have come into play. Could have been asked for.
Could you go back a slide? Or two?
Further?
Yeah, that one's fine. Could you explain the last bullet there? How do you define, give an example of what might be materially detrimental to the purposes?
That's a judgment call. It's why it's discretion, one of the reasons why it's discretionary. It's just like for setback, is there is there something that makes this a really bad idea? Like, it could be, and I'm just imagining now, I don't know, it could be maybe the house on the other side of the property line is was legally built or had a variance or something and is too close to the property lines, so you're getting a much smaller setback between the two houses. And maybe it's at the point where that's a problem, they're too close together for fire safety, for light in air or whatever. You say, no, you know, really, you need to fix this. It's gonna depend on the circumstances.
This is all this is all after the construction has been done.
After it's started, not necessarily after it's done, after it's started.
After the violation has occurred.
Right.
I could turn into a bad guy then. I was thinking about this, and in the last year, we've, the planning commission, if I have remembered this correctly, we've only received two requests due to setbacks. The one in Rhodes End, and then there was one, can't remember what street it's on, but I can.
Oh, it's in White.
Yeah, and so, that's only two in a year. And I just, I think maybe overall, I am absolutely questioning the need for it because I I'm just thinking if there were only two in this year, and if it makes it more waffly for people who are building a house and oops, they made a mistake, but it won't matter 'cause, you know, I know the planning director or whatever.
Doesn't work that way.
Well, you maybe for you, but you won't be the only one in that position in the future. And we are the planning commission, so we look to the future. And so, I just I'm I just don't see a need for that because, for example, the first house, the one in Rhodes End, that was pretty clearly understood, at least as I remember it, from the commission, that that wouldn't, that isn't something that we wish to approve. And the other one was a little more hopeful, or the people seemed to be like they were hoping that they could do something, rather than they did it, they knew it, they did it. I just, I don't see the need for this. Sorry.
Richard, is there a what is the fee if I come in and apply for a variance? Is it a sliding scale or?
No.
Seven fifty.
Seven hundred and fifty dollars.
So, just like an adjustment to your your plan is seven hundred and fifty, right?
Variance is seven hundred and fifty. There's no fee set for, no proposed fee for the adjustment we're talking about here. I mean, there would be a fee, but it's there is no proposal at this time to say what it would be.
So, we can lower the fee or raise the fee?
It's what I'm trying to say, I think you're asking me, what is the fee for an administrative adjustment? The thing that we're talking about possibly adding?
No, I'm trying to learn if I come into the office and I I'm asking for a variance, I've got a concrete driveway that's already been laid and it's over 12 inches from where it should be. Is that a planned development change or is that a variance change? And if either one of them, what is the cost for me coming in and getting this rectified?
A variance is something asked for in advance, and that's $750. For some reason, you, the lot has an odd shape, and to get a normal-sized house on it at some point, maybe your corner of it needs, I believe it needs to be into the setback by some figure. You ask for that in advance. That costs $750. There's a hearing here, and the planning commission decides whether to grant that variance based on the statutory criteria. The administrative adjustment we're talking about here, can't tell you what the fee is because no fee has been set. Because this thing doesn't exist yet. It could be less, it could be more. I think probably would end up being less because there's less staff time involved in dealing with it. That, though, is after the fact. The administrative adjustment is an after-the-fact adjustment rather than before-the-fact the way a variance normally is.
Thank you.
There was a there was a violation up in the villages where someone had poured extra concrete and made their driveway, you know, 20-some feet wide. Well, it really isn't an appropriate candidate for a variance because it was, you know, self-created hardship. But also, you know, it was a violation. There it was, it couldn't be a modification to an approved plan development, final plan, because it wasn't a standard. It exceeded all standards for all driveways in all zones. So, there was no way to approve it. So, this is is not a substitute for an amendment to your plan. It's not, it can be looked at as a substitute for a variance by basically saying, hey, the county had a minor variance procedure, this is a minor variance procedure. Instead of coming here and having a full hearing, we had one that was like a five-inch issue. There was five inches and it was should have been setback, and the developer was told, hey, this is probably five inches off, and it turned out that's exactly what it was off. He might not have gotten a variance because it was a, you know, he knew that he was told, so he created his own hardship. Now, we had the property owner up in Maplewood tear out the driveway. So, there is a way to do it, okay? You can you can tell people to tear out the driveway. Or you can provide an alternative avenue of relief, which is what this provision is, which is something you're gonna consider. If it's not something you wanna recommend, then you would simply tell the council, we don't recommend it.
Richard? How did you come up with the 12 inches? To me, that seems very generous, especially when it comes to height. And if somebody's made that much of an error, it's either they're either incompetent or they're doing it intentionally. That's at least, that's how I would see that. Are there, is there a precedent for this in other city governments? Do planning directors have this kind of authority?
I'm not I'm not sure what other cities might have. I think the county just says a minor thing, it doesn't say how big minor is. The 12 inches I came up with is sort of the sort of the biggest thing I could think of as being minor. Again, or 15%. So, with a five-foot setback, a 12-inch variance is more than 15%. It's 20%. So, if you were off by the five-foot setback, you'd need, the maximum you could get would be nine inches, for example. So, for a single-family house, the biggest you could get would be nine inches. Or that's single-family, single-some.
What about height limits?
Height, it's. Yeah. Yeah, we're like, in most single-family zones in a city, the maximum is 35 feet, so 12 inches would be the most you could get. 12 against 12 inches or 15%, whichever is less. There's nothing magic about that number. Certainly, you could, if you wanted to recommend, that it be different.
Your own code actually has a distinction between major and minor amendments when it comes to planned development amendments, I believe. A minor amendment is an amendment that doesn't have to go back through this process, or rather, I think the parameters are something like it can't be visible from the street, there's some minor changes, doesn't change. I know that the question has come up before. There is provision in your own code for distinction between minor and major. And the fact is, if you don't have a minor process set forth, then you gotta go through the regular process, yeah. So, I have seen this in other codes that I've in places I've worked.
We went over all these. Pardon me? Oh, D River Walkway. Yeah. This applies in commercial zones along the D River. So, this is the zoning map. The red hatched area is commercial, the solid red is commercial, the D River is down here. This is Highway 101 coming through here, D River coming across it. So, we're talking about commercial zones adjacent to the D River. So, just to show you what it is, there's this property on the north side of the D River the city owns, looking at, actually, Urban Renewal Agency owns it, looking at redevelopment of that. There's a motel on the south side extending over to the Union 50 Club down here, which is being redeveloped right now. These properties here, these three just to the west of this canal, those are zoned commercial, but they're developed with single-family homes. So, the proposal would not apply to them because it would only apply to when you're doing commercial development on commercially zoned property.
I haven't heard what the proposal is.
You know, I'm working up to it, so, I'm just trying to.
Backing in.
Backing in, trying to get some of the objections out of the way first, so, just to set in context here. So, the current law says you have to put in a five-foot sidewalk adjacent to the streets. So, we go back here on this property with the motel down at the Union 50, there's southeast First Street. So, when those properties would be developed, they would be required to have a five-foot sidewalk along their south sides. This property up here, the Urban Renewal Agency owns, they'd have to along northeast First Street, they'd have to put a sidewalk along the north side of the property. What we're talking about here is, again, it applies to commercial development east of the highway. They were proposing that they install a five-foot sidewalk adjacent to the river rather than along the street. And deed an additional five-foot easement to the city so the city could put an additional five feet in, so there'd be a 10-foot-wide walkway along the river.
Just the river?
Yes.
On both sides?
On both the north side and the south side of the river, yes. Not on both sides, so each end a little piece of property. So, instead of having to do the sidewalk along the street, you do a walkway along the river, public walkway along the river.
So, these would actually be the world's shortest five-foot sidewalks?
The idea is that at some point, there would be possibly pedestrian bridge connecting both sides.
Oh, nice.
So, that and then ultimately could connect into the head-to-bay trail system. And sidewalks, at least on the north side, I'm not sure about the south side, but at least on the north side, there's an arch of the bridge over the highway that actually doesn't have the river in it. And presumably, we could extend that sidewalks that would provide beach access through there.
Are we talking sidewalk sidewalks or are we talking boardwalks? Because I know there's wetlands in that area there, and there are trails across the wetlands, but they're boardwalks to protect the wetlands.
I'm talking, as far as the development, commercial developers go, we're talking sidewalk sidewalks, but I think it could be could be, it could conceivably be boardwalk type thing. The trail through the wetland is here in the state park. And this is state park owned, so they wouldn't be required to do anything. This is actually city-owned or Urban Renewal owned, this is open space. And this is largely wetland. What I would expect is like when this property that the Urban Renewal Agency owns, when that develops, I would think there would be, you know, this sidewalk along here, either it would, it may just end and go up to the existing roadway to connect over, or sort of wind through here, depending on exactly how the lay of the land goes. So, yeah, there's wetland here, but we're not talking about going into this this area in here. We're just talking about really along here and along here right now. There's a canal here, there would have to be a bridge across the canal there. But the idea is just connectivity to provide an amenity for a riverwalk.
Thank you.
On the south side of that, is that where the restaurant's coming in to town?
With the, here's where the Union 50 Club, yeah, that's being.
Being developed.
Being, you know, internal improvements being made for a restaurant there. And because they're not doing, they're not replacing the building, they wouldn't be required to put in any kind of walkway.
That would be along that property path, they should be doing that kind of work. Put it in new construction.
For new construction. So, someday, if that building is torn down and new construction comes in, they would, then whoever does that new construction would be required to put in the walkway.
But that seems counterproductive because the way it's set up now for that building, you can canoe your canoe up to it, tie it up on the outside and go in and have something to eat. And I think if that property's ever redeveloped, it would either be a hotel, but having boat access would probably be a nice little venue for people to enjoy.
A similar thing with respect to head-to-bay trail. We have a, in the Parks Master Plan, there is a general alignment in there for the idea for a head-to-bay trail running from the open space at the north end of Villages at Cascade Head property, down the full length of the city, down to Sylent's Bay. This is a slightly older map. The part in black here, which is in the Villages at Cascade Head, that exists, that part of the trail exists. And actually, it's been extended down along West Douglas Lake Road. And actually, it's been extended down along West Douglas Lake Road, down to 22nd and, up 22nd to Surf. There's a gap down here where, where it crosses wetland, but actually, we'll be putting in a boardwalk across the wetland to, to close that gap. And there's a part in here through, by the Spring Lake, open space, that paved part of the trail, ADA compatible trail in there. And then similar, just down to the south, through Spyglass Open Space and so on. What's, what's been happening over the years is, as property develops, we've been sort of opportunistically trying to get, get pieces of the trail put in. This proposal for, in commercial zones, again, we have that five-foot sidewalk requirement. In commercial zones, it would be to put in a five-foot sidewalk, and deed an additional five-foot easement for the city to put in the other five feet, so you get a 10-foot wide trail through the property. In residential zones, again, we have that five-foot requirement. The proposal would be for, in residential developments, to put in a 10-foot sidewalk. And you get a credit against the Park's system development charge for the cost of that extra five feet of sidewalk. This is an example of the wider sidewalk. This is the Villages at Cascade Head going past the Maplewood property. That's part of the, part of the trail. And the, the final piece.
Question about the head-to-bay trail?
Yeah.
Are you committed to sidewalks? As a walker, I really like to walk on asphalt, it's much softer, or on bark dust. Do you really need to make the head-to-bay trail all cement?
No.
Yeah, okay. So that's just, you could change, it doesn't have to be a sidewalk?
Right.
Okay.
Do you know how, how, I'm just kind of, five feet doesn't sound like that much. And then there's 10 feet, now it sounds like a little bit more. And so how much, do you have some idea about how much of the setback or the footprint of the lots this will take from, especially residential? I'm just, I can't, I don't see that here, so I.
Normally, or I'd say, in, in many cases, the, the five, the first five feet actually is in the city right-of-way. And then, it's, depending on the situation, the full 10 feet could possibly be, depending on exactly what the plan is for that road, or it could be five feet in the public right-of-way and five feet on private property. And marijuana stores, right now, for medical marijuana, the dispensaries are required to be located 1,000 feet from schools and 1,000 feet from each other. That's in, in state law. In recreational marijuana, in the initiative that was passed on that, the only restriction like this is that they have to be 1,000 feet from schools. The 1,000 feet apart is not, you know, is not part of this with regard to recreational marijuana. And so the, the amendment would have an additional requirement, they'd be 1,000 feet from each other. That is something that we're putting out there for you and the council to weigh in on what you want to do. It's not something that is, how do I put it? It's not, it's not critical, it's just something that has come up, and I know that some people have some concerns, so we wanted to get it aired out, so people can discuss it.
Richard, we had a discussion on this, you know, a year, year and a half ago, and I thought that we've kind of also thrown in a possibility of 1,000 feet from parks or places where youth gather, so how did that not ever go anywhere?
Um, it didn't, didn't get the, the support for.
It died.
Being more restrictive, so.
Died, it's too complex.
I, I don't recall exactly at what point it died, but the, it probably was at, at council, but basically, we were stuck with what the state law said, which was 1,000 feet from schools and 1,000 feet from each other. Didn't feel a need, had to be, be more restrictive. When you start doing things like 1,000 feet from parks, eventually you reach, actually very quickly, you reach a point where they can't be anywhere.
I, I kind of remember that that discussion was at city council, because I kind of remember a map with circles drawn everywhere, and they were interlocking, and there wasn't much left. So I think that's where it died.
Oh. When, I'm sorry.
I just, I just have a question for you. I'm trying to, I know it's a different animal, but what, what now are the restrictions for, like, liquor stores? Are they, do they have to be 1,000 feet apart from anything, or they can be anywhere?
Any commercial zone.
In the commercial zone? Okay.
That's, that's typically the argument against this kind of restriction, is that, you know, it's essentially no different from liquor stores, and there's no reason to say they can't be located next door to each other, or down the block, or whatever.
Okay, because we have, we have two parts to this thing. We have the medical marijuana, which would be like a pharmacy. And then there's the recreational marijuana, which would be like a liquor store. And they're pretty similar, but different, so they, okay.
Didn't the new rules come out that actually, medical and recreational, they are going to allow it to be sold in the same store? I believe anyway, they do.
At some point, yeah, but again, medical's got to be 1,000 feet apart. So even if, even if they're.
Right.
The same store, they still can only be 1,000 feet apart, if they're about the medical.
I have, I don't know if you'll be able to answer. When businesses are allowed to sell recreationally, what if, or would medicinal marijuana dispensaries sell recreationally with the option of having it sell medicinally? So would we have the five or six medicinal marijuana shops, plus five or six recreational marijuana shops? Or is there going to be a distinction between who can sell recreationally and also medically? Or is it going to be one or the other?
Kate, you, you have some information on that. I know you have.
My specialty.
Can, can someone selling.
My specialty.
Medical marijuana sell, will they be able to sell recreational out of the same store?
As we speak, no. But the legislature's meeting. And so I think they have some things in front of them that may allow the, the medical dispensaries to also have recreational. The medical dispensaries are the only place now that can sell recreational.
Right.
But apparently, by the end of the year, they have to make a choice of which, when they want to have. And that may change by the time that.
But currently, it, it will be one or the other, once recreational marijuana sales are allowed to be standalone.
That's as I understand it, they have to make a choice which one they want, so they can maybe have two different locations that may be able to be next door to each other, unless the local ordinance says you can't do that.
I believe I have heard credible rumor that it will, they will be able to sell out of the same store, that is going to pass to be that way. But I believe they're still going to have to have two separate licenses, since O L C C controls one.
And the health authority controls the other. And taxes collected on one and taxes not on the other.
Correct, showing a medical card or not.
Would there be a distinction between 1,000 feet from a medical dispensary and 1,000 feet from a recreational facility? Would there be that distinction as well? Or is it dispense, is it marijuana, however you get it, 1,000 feet?
The way it's, the way it's drafted, it'd be however you get it. That could be changed, but I don't know that it would be, that would allow them to be closer, if that was changed.
If in the event that one side is medicinal and one side is recreational, the two businesses next to each other, they have to be 1,000 feet apart.
Well, this gives us a head up, we can, heads up, we can think about it.
Right.
Think about it.
And maybe we'll know more in two weeks.
Yeah, you know, depending what the legislature does, it might solve a substantial part of this. That's all I have. Deb's going to take over now.
Thank you, Richard. Good evening.
Now, we're going to talk about multifamily. A couple of years ago, we talked about doing some amendments to multifamily zone. And the reason that we initiated them at the time was because we had a particular complaint about requiring RV and boat parking spaces. And that was sort of the, the impetus behind those changes. At the time, I did suggest other things about improvements that we could make. And because we were in somewhat of a hurry to try to get that implemented, we dropped those off and said, we'll come back to them later. And as things happen, you know, here it is, a couple of years later, and we're now finally getting around to taking another look at some of those additional requirements. This is the multifamily zone at 1720. And the first thing that I want to mention is that we do now require 20-foot front yard for multifamily. I am suggesting that maybe we would want to change that to allow a front porch to encroach up to five feet into that yard. Here's an example. This, this is a much less than a 20-foot yard. This looks more like a five or seven, or 10-foot yard. This is the only one I saw with front porch, so that's why I included it. Some of these photos are for interest, just for interest, you know, might spur some thoughts on your part. They don't necessarily reflect everything, you know, that I'm talking about.
You live within the city?
Uh, this was, I took this when I was in some other city. It's not, not here. In fact, I don't think any of my examples are from here. Also, side and rear yard clarification, this came up the last time we reviewed, well, not the last time, but almost recently, when we reviewed a complex that had more than one building. And so what determines the side yard? We vary the side yard depending on the height of the structure. So if it's 35 feet, it works out to be a 15-foot side yard or rear yard. And, but if you have a 35-foot building, and then you also have a 20-foot building, you, you end up with a different side yard. And is it based on just principal buildings or on accessory buildings? So that's something that needs clarification. Richard alluded to density bonuses and affordable housing and so forth. And when we discussed this last time, one of the commissioners said, who, who is a builder, said, you know, I think our, our requirement for square footage per unit for the high-density part of, remember, if you recall, multifamily has two different densities, one for high-density, which is within 150 feet of commercial use, and then a lower density. And he felt that the higher-density one, at 1,200 square feet per dwelling unit, was realistic, as far as the builder is concerned, that, yes, we could actually make a project work with that kind of number. He felt that 2,250 square feet per unit for the lower density was not realistic, and suggested that's why we haven't been getting many multifamily developments. Well, my thought is, if we want to allow for higher density, then maybe also we could ask for something in return, better, higher standards of development, or more affordable housing. So I have made several suggestions in the proposed ordinance. One is that we provide some density bonus for enhancements for the multifamily tenants, for instance. And right now, we have been, most recently, we have been counting private balconies, decks, and patios as recreation space. In the proposal, we've decided that we should keep those separate, that recreation space should be on the ground, and either be indoors or outdoors, but have more, more actual space for play, or other kinds of recreation. So anyway, but we still like balconies and decks and patios, and I think residents value those. So we are suggesting that maybe we could incentivize those. And so I suggest, and, and these numbers are, are ones that I have tried to work with to see, you know, what, what seems reasonable. If we figure out that we want to have 1.5 square feet for each 1% of the units, then for 100% of the units, you would have 150 square feet reduction in that 2,250, or that 1,200 square foot requirement per unit. So we can't, you know, it's, it's sort of a multi, multi-step thinking process here. Also, we require recreation space, but we don't require, we don't have any requirements about what goes in it, or whether any amenities are provided, or furnishings. So I was thinking that also would be something that would be nice to incentivize. So they would be getting a reduction of 30 square feet in the required square footage per unit, if they provide improvements on, and amenities that equal 0.2% of the total project cost. So for instance, if you had a 30-unit apartment complex, and it costs $3 million, 0.2% would be about $6,000. So if the developer could spend $6,000 on recreation equipment and furnishings, it might be playgrounds, grills, sports equipments, you know, appliances in an indoor space, then, then they could get 30 square feet less. So they might be able to get, you know, on a 30-unit place, they might, I mean, you know, we'd have, you'd have to calculate that out and play with that. But if they wanted to provide $12,000, you know, we could, we could even increase, give them more density bonus. In the end, I'm going to say, there is a limit on how much we're going to allow them to reduce.
I was just about to ask that.
In fact, I already said this. The idea, I just didn't say it to you, but I put it on the slide. Up to 240 square feet in the high-density, so it would go from 1,200 to 960 square feet per unit. On the lower-density, 450 square feet in the low-density zone, that would re, allow them to reduce the square footage per unit from 2,250 to 1,800. Okay? So they could get bonuses using any of these, or a combination of any of these, they don't have to take it all. Plus, we still have to be realistic that other factors limit the amount of density, such as being able to provide the required parking, being able to have the required side yards, overall coverage, and that kind of thing, being able to still provide the landscaping. So, you know, the, each developer would have to figure out what would be beneficial to them, what would be worth the value that they would be putting into the complex.
This guy could put in 3% of the total project cost and get the 450 for each unit in the development.
Say that again.
3% of the total project cost would get in the whole 450 square feet per unit in the development.
3%?
Well, that's 15 times 0.2%, I think.
Okay. All right.
I'm just wondering, what, what would it cost him to get the full 450 for each unit?
Okay, for, yeah, 450, okay. So say, if you did 100% patios and balconies, you'd get 150. And. And then say you did this...
I can't see what you're pointing.
Oh, I'm sorry. The 0.2% of the total project cost spent on recreation, whether you get 30 square feet. So say they, okay, so you're saying like maybe he'd want to do 10% of that, 10 times that?
If you divided 30 square feet into 450, you'd get 15, right? 15 times 0.2% is 3%. So if he spent 3%, he'd get the full 450 square feet.
Okay, so 3 million times 3% would be 90?
Yeah, so if he put in 90,000...
$90,000.
For 450 reduction, or in, reduction in density or increase in density.
And that would be, that would be a fun place to live.
Putting it in perspective, yeah.
Yes. And, you know, we can limit these if you think, you know, if you're uncomfortable with that, you think there should only be, certainly there should be a cap on how much you can spend on recreation, you know, and get credit for it. That's fine.
I was just trying to get a sense of the magnitude of the numbers.
Right, we can play with these numbers a lot, you know, there's, yeah. Another thing that I thought might be beneficial, and I want to say before I get too much further into this, is that I would like to have hear from developers and tenants, apartment tenants, because I think that, you know, I'm thinking of what, and I'm looking for other places, you know, what types of things do people want in apartment complexes or in apartment buildings? And also trying to, you know, it really takes the developer to be able to say whether or not this is attractive, whether this would be used, maybe there's something else that we should be incentivizing that we haven't thought of, either from the perspective of the developer or the person who lives there. So anyway, this, you know, this is, this is the beginning. Anyway, this other thing that I've suggested is improvements for coastal climate, and that would include weather protection, wind protection, and more window area than required for, well, I guess that's examples, windbreaks. And again, it would be based on the amount of investment they make in these improvements and tie that to the percentage of the total building or project cost, and you get the same 30-feet reduction. Here's just an example of an apartment complex, again, that has some of the features that we're talking about. And here's another one. We've got some balconies, we've got long, you know, big windows. And we don't know what's behind, we don't know where the recreation space is, you know. Okay, then, the other thing that we're talking about here is the number of spaces. Right now, our requirement is two spaces per apartment unless it is an elderly apartment, in which case it is one per bedroom plus one per employee if there are employees providing assistance or cleaning services, something like that. I am suggesting two things that you might consider. One is that if the complex or building is within 350 feet or a block of a transit stop, that it would reduce the parking requirement by 10%. I'm also suggesting for each 10 bicycle parking spaces, they can reduce the requirement by one space.
How old does an apartment have to be before it's considered elderly?
Are you joking with me?
I think so, I think so.
Okay. Actually, our elderly is for, an apartment is considered elderly if the tenants are 55 and over.
Which how many in town do we have of those?
Well, in the most recent apartments we've had built, you know, some of the, some of the units are designated for senior elderly, but not all.
But I mean, full-on apartment complexes in town, do we have four or five of them that are age restricted?
That are all over 55? I don't know that. Do you know that?
I believe it's probably at least three that are already established that way. And then several others are max income-based as well. So you cannot make over a certain amount.
Okay.
Several of those.
I was gonna ask kind of a related question, but how many of the apartment complexes in town are rent subsidized? Do you have a number, a figure on that?
I don't. Do you, Richard?
I think that there's three.
I know of, yeah, I know of three. I don't know if I'm right and if there are others.
And I believe that it's also the ones that are income-restricted as well, that you can't make over a certain amount.
They would be.
And there's, so those three, and then the over 55, so six.
Okay.
Would this apply to those? I mean, does that matter in this, this?
I would, I would not know. I'd make a distinction. The other, I mean, the elderly are already adjusted in the 1756, the parking requirements. Okay, so parking location, not in the required yards, not between the principal building and the street, buffer of landscaping around parking lots if they are visible from the street. And this is just basically to help them blend into a neighborhood to be more attractive to the people who live there. And here are some diagrams that show that, and these don't show it very well, you'll be able to see them if you check the ordinances online. But the first one on the left shows the parking lot in front. The second one, and a lot of communities do this sort of thing, this is from a place back in Iowa. And, but what is acceptable is to have a driveway where the parking is behind, to have access to parking behind the building from the alley, or to have parking access from a side street. Also, if you have more than one building, then, you know, the idea is to cluster them, the parking behind the buildings, again, either through an access from the alley or from the street. But it is not acceptable to have the parking lot in the front of the buildings. Here's an example from Fargo, North Dakota, where it snows a lot. And so, they tend to provide a lot of garages, but in this case, you know, they are in front of the apartment building. So you don't get a sense of having the connection of the building to the street, and appearance-wise, you know, you're living behind, behind your garage. So here's an example of this, and I'm not sure exactly whether this is, this is some sort of a driving aisle, it's not a public street, and the accesses are from that for the under, under-building parking. Multifamily, okay. Recreation area. Right now, we require 250, yes?
I just had a thought. Would you mind backing up?
Sure.
Sorry about that. I was just thinking if, if this type of building, if a developer wanted to build something with it, with the parking underneath?
Tuck-under parking, yeah.
And there's some consideration whether that's a good thing or not for the city, but would, so if their parking is being taken up by the same footprint of the building, does that change some of your other calculations about, you know, the parking lot area? Does that turn it into a playground or, I mean, are there more incentives that can be gathered by parking underneath?
I haven't written any incentives intentionally that would incentivize tuck-under parking, but, you know, it's a possibility. And maybe there is some in there, but I'm, it's not intentional at this point. Okay, yeah, so we require 250 square feet per unit. And we do have some requirements. It can't be in a required yard. And we're suggesting maybe we need some more. Not within 30 feet of garbage or recycling. We would like the recreation spaces to be within view of the residences it serves, just so that there are some eyes on that and it makes it more secure for people who are using The minimum is equal, oh, the minimum size of the play area itself should be at least 250 square feet. So that's like a, okay, 12 by 12, you know, it's close to that, or a 10 by 25.
12 by 20 would be. 12 by 12 is 144.
Right, that's too small. 12 by 20, you know, 25 by 10, something like that. It doesn't have to be a square.
If the dimension is less than 20 feet, wouldn't that mean the minimum size?
Yeah, that's right. Yes, it would. That we have to change.
I'm just saying that you can't have a long strip, that, you know, you could have a long strip that was 1,000 feet long and two feet wide, and you'd have 2,000.
Well, because then you've got one dimension less than 20 feet.
Right, that's what that, reflecting was.
Right, yeah, sorry, yeah, that's definitely, yeah, an error. I saw that at one point and I forgot about changing it, so.
Are you changing it to 20 by 20, or I mean, are you changing that 200?
The 20 will have to be reduced.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, we'll have to reduce the 20.
Or increase the 250.
Or increase the 250.
I'm just trying to think of what that could be, and it's not large enough to be a basketball court.
Well, recreation, you know, can be for people who just want to sit outside on a bench and read a book.
And this is currently including the patios, correct?
Well, we have been, yes, our policy has been to allow them to include the patios, so it really cuts into the overall common space.
I saw an apartment complex in Monmouth today that was really nice. They had little truck gardens set up, and I would assume a truck garden would be the same thing as a recreational area, but it was really nicely done. It was, had aluminum, no, they had aluminum area that they had, or probably six feet by three feet, four feet.
For individuals, you mean?
Really set into the landscape of the apartment complex.
When are they required to have this common recreational space?
Any apartment, and we consider multifamily three or more units?
I'm thinking specifically the development by Bymart. I don't see a playground area there, and I'm wondering about that specifically.
Okay, yes. On that one, we did include the balconies, and we included a space right behind building, well, there are five, five buildings, I think. The largest one is in the northeast corner, it's closest to Bymart. It's, it's right at the end of one of the buildings, and the garbage and recycling area is right here. And yes, it's the one that's still under construction, so we're still waiting on that one. But the other areas are considerably smaller than that one, and some of them are, I would say, maybe 10 feet by 24. So, you know, they might just about meet this requirement.
I just haven't heard any good things from people living there, and I would hate to encourage more density buildings like that with such dissatisfaction.
Yes.
And I wouldn't be comfortable with that.
Well, we, this is our opportunity to try to figure out, you know, how we can address those. And I do want to say a word about density. Density has been done very well in some places, and especially in cities where land costs are so, so high. So they have learned to build higher density and still make them attractive to tenants. So, you know, I certainly think, you know, that's a goal of ours to be able to do both if we can.
Absolutely, in the unique of any major city, it has very high density and happy.
And I've heard a lot of complaints about that complex too, in regards to the sunlight that they're getting. They seem to be, a lot of the units seem to be pretty dark because of the way it's situated on the property. And I think there's even a couple of apartments that don't even have windows because they're into a breezeway where they sit, so.
I think that was one of the first things that we talked about under the weather thing, that, you know, that having it oriented to gain as much passive solar as possible is sort of a prerequisite to getting bonus points and for adding some of those other kinds of improvements.
And to be clear, this was outside the tsunami zone? There will be a different set of rules inside the tsunami zone?
Well, I felt that maybe we should not be incentivizing more density within a tsunami evacuation zone.
And that would be the distant or the...
So we would not incent, we would not provide density bonuses for anything in the tsunami evacuation zone.
In the local or the distant one? Isn't there two elevations? Is there a difference?
A distance one doesn't amount to anything. And if I need to, I can specify that that we're talking about. A local, yeah, because that would be the greater of the two.
Right.
So that's a good point. We want to make sure we, we know what we're talking about. Okay, so, and slopes no greater than 1 to 12. And that is so that you actually have an area where you can sit or play, and you're not, you know, rolling down the hill unintentionally. This is the high-end, high-density, but I would just want to show you some of their recreation space. I thought that was pretty attractive. Here we have a complex with the, with the recreation space in the front, you know, near the street, so it gives the complex a very nice look. And here, this is also a recreation space. It doesn't have to be playgrounds. If you, if you're catering to an older group of people, then, okay, then, is it moving by itself or did I do that? I'm sorry. And, but, I mean, recreation can be many things. It can be gardening, it can be sitting out, it could be grilling, it could be having a playground if you have a lot of tenants with small children. So another thought was that if it is an indoor room that we're providing for recreation, that it should have transparency or, meaning windows or glass in the door from either the outside or the inside, just so that it, again, can be passive supervision when people walk by, people feel more comfortable. We have written this to change it, to specifically say that balconies, decks, and patios do not count in this 250. And, but then, you know, we also had to add, because in mixed-use situations, we refer, like for instance, in the Taft Village Core Zone, we refer back to multifamily. You can have multifamily, or in fact, you're required to have it in the mixed-use in Taft, and you have to refer back to the RM standards for development. Well, in that situation where you're talking about apartments above a store, it's not as realistic to say you have to have 250 square feet. But I'm, so I'm proposing that at least we say something and that we do count the balconies and the decks because, you know, that may be the only space available, or a rooftop, you know, we, there are ways to provide rec space. In the ordinance that we published, we do have some things about access barriers, and that's just having a curb so that cars on the street or in the drive can't, can't jump the curb and, or, you know, come up and hit the buildings. When I looked at it again before, as I was preparing this slideshow, I realized I don't think it has been changed. Both Richard and I worked on the multifamily things, and I thought that he'd changed it. I don't think he did.
I don't think we did.
Okay, so that's just something you don't have to worry.
There is provisions that you have to have it, and the breaks can only be so big and have to be so far apart, so you can't have all driveway in front.
Driveway, you can't have all driveway, right. Okay, so I, and yes, and I want to go back through and underline and cross out, it got to be such a mess as I was doing this, that I just cleaned it up and published it just without that under, underlining and strike-throughs. published it just without that under, underlining and strike-throughs. So, okay, with the pedestrian network, we're proposing some more detail to connect the building entrances to the streets to each other, to transit schools, park, commercial, to have an ADA surface raised to curb height, the sidewalks when you're right beside a driveway, so to actually bump it up, it's for safety, to have marked crossings, so when you, your pedestrian network is crossing the driving aisles, then you have to make sure those are marked and safe. And that you stub these, this pedestrian network into, to the lot lines, so if there's future development that's going to happen next door, you've got a method to continue.
If, if I can add, is there a, a city sidewalk requirement height? I feel like some of the head-to-bay sidewalks are like typically low.
There is no standard.
There isn't not a standard?
There's no standard.
So, what defines a sidewalk to the roadbed?
It can be flush, it could be below, we, actually, along 101, there's a place where the sidewalk actually is.
Lower than the street?
Lower than the street, and actually, there's a, there's a weird raised curb between them, and it's just, it's not to say there shouldn't be a standard, but there presently is not.
Is that something that we, as planning commission, can enforce?
You can.
Or recommend any of that stuff?
Recommend, yes, certainly.
Okay. Can I make myself an out here?
You know, there, there was some controversy when the head-to-bay trailway, and that it was, I think it's only four inches instead of six that you normally see, and that it was somehow, it wasn't up to standard, but there was, there is no standard, and it was, it was certainly okay, because people are used to seeing a six-inch curb.
Do we have a width requirement to be considered a sidewalk?
We require a five-foot sidewalk.
And I think now, maybe ADA is moving to six foot, am I right? It seems like there's a move to six foot.
That's so that two wheelchairs can go over next to each other and passing?
Perhaps.
Well, I'm just.
Our city engineer would be able to tell us that right off. Okay, here's another example from the Midwest, and this is just to emphasize that we need, we need ADA access, and we need a walkable environment, which this doesn't really seem to be, I don't know where that individual is coming back from or heading. All right, street network on the site, Richard, you wrote this part of the ordinance.
Yeah, the idea there is that the, the internal vehicular circulation system should connect directly to public streets and allow public streets to continue through the development and allow for, for future development, to, to have public streets through it. This will be an issue in larger developments, you know, smaller ones that don't have what amounts to a street, really just has, you know, a parking aisle, it would presumably be different from this, but anything that would count as a street would have to be to, to public street standards and to provide connectivity for the street network.
When do you define a public or a parking aisle versus a street for the developer?
Um, yeah.
Yeah, because that, I mean, there's, and there's, oh, that just goes that way, you know, just the width of a car.
It can't be just the width of a car, but it, it's where, where, for instance, if it's just a parking lot, you know, you got, you got your access that goes, goes in, basically it's a driveway that goes to the parking, that's not necessarily a public street, if it's, if it's going winding through the development and there's parking lots coming off of it, that's, that's a street, or if it's winding through and then it's going to continue on onto the adjacent property, it's someday, that's a street.
We'll take a look at that and see if there's anything that we can add to make that more clear.
Add some clarity or clarity.
Now, we're talking about the building orientation to the neighborhood. If it's one building, we propose that at least one facade and one entrance face the street, so the, for instance, you know, the apartments that you mentioned over by, by Mart, two ends of the building face the street, and I guess three will, and.
The established street, not the street that they create?
Or, yeah, or street.
Or the street they create.
Or is the street, or street, yeah.
Or is the street.
Or street, yeah.
Street coordinate, or, all right.
Yes, and those, the ends of those buildings do not have windows or doors, so you consider whether or not you want to have a building oriented towards the street, when it's, when it's a single building, there are two different ways to look at this, when it's a single building, when it's multiple buildings on one lot. If it's multiple buildings, any street-facing facade must have at least one entrance to the street. Interior building must have main entrance visible from private streets or parking, so I put in something that says you can't have the main entrance be from the parking garage, for instance, it should be a door, and, and maybe that's a building code issue, too, I, it could very well be. Here's an example of, from the Midwest. It's safe because nobody will know, I'm, you know, nobody who owns this building is going to come after me probably, but this is the back of the apartments, and they spaced an inner, the, the parking lot on the other side, so, and this is sort of a, you know, a well-used street, and, and so we're all looking at the back of this apartment complex. It does at least have some patio doors, but it's not an entrance, it's not, it doesn't have any street presence. I could point out some other things about that, maybe I will, you know, later, let's see, do I also, oh, I, I think I've got my slides a little bit out of order here. I also talk about articulation in the ordinance, and just some of the design details that I think maybe we all appreciate, but we're not so aware of necessarily until they're called out in this, but if you're changing building materials from one wall to the other, and, and we do say in the ordinance that the walls, just as we do in our commercial ordinance, that you have to have a same nice treatment on all the walls, but if you're changing materials from the front to the back, or from wall to wall, you should change them on the inside corner, rather than on the exterior corner. But if you do change it, I have to change it on the exterior outside corner, then you wrap it around the other side, so that there's three feet there. So, these two are acceptable, you also, when you're changing vertically, you need to have some sort of horizontal band where you go from one material to the other, so this is a, you know, a nicer look to a building, this is all about appearance here, than this, and this is what they show as unacceptable. I'm just showing some, more pictures that I took of nice-looking apartments, and that's a whole street full of them, and that's, I imagine, a fairly high density, so, you know, it depends on how you do it. Okay, let's see, these are the front elevations, if they're greater than fifty feet in width, or eight hundred square feet in the, the building front, typically not including the roof, and this is, this is similar to what we talk about in commercial design standards, then you have to have some articulation, meaning you can't just have a plain front, and, you know, you have to have some setback or projection of the building, you have to have maybe a different roof line and treatment on the front such as balconies, you also have to have, you know, a cover over your door, but there are many different ways to do this, it just requires more thought, and I don't even know how much more expense, honestly, you know, and, and I'm sure it requires some more labor, maybe some different materials, but I think primarily it requires some forethought. Again, about building articulation, at least one exterior pedestrian door, front doors should not be the sliding glass patio doors, no facade should be greater than a hundred feet, and that's one that, some of the buildings I was showing you are pretty large buildings, you know, it's something we can talk about. And each story must have at least fifteen percent windows, and that's one that, you know, that I think we heard from neighbors of new apartment building, that the, the facade facing the street didn't have any windows, and if you live across the street from that, you know, so.
Are these changes, or these, like, possible changes, or this is what it is right now, and you're just telling us that these are the standards for multifamily?
I've been telling you when it's something that already exists, for instance, the two hundred and fifty square feet per unit is a requirement for recreation space. Then I'm going in and telling you what we're proposing in this ordinance that you will be reviewing.
Two weeks.
In a couple weeks. So, yeah, I know, there are a lot of changes here.
Going, okay.
There are a lot of changes in here, yeah.
It's totally fine, I just make sure.
Because we didn't have any design criteria, our commercial design standards apply only in the general commercial and the recreation commercial zone, doesn't apply to multifamily, so, which is also, you know, a sort of a commercial use. But, so we didn't have any, so it, it does seem like a lot that now we're talking about all these various things. Here's an example, it has some projections, it has some differences in the roof line, I think it would be pretty good-looking from the street, except they put their big sign in this wall right in front of what should be sort of the welcoming entrance, so, so, you know, I, I think when it gets down to it, we're trying the best we can to figure out what makes a building attractive to the tenants and also to their neighbors, but it's, it's very difficult, you know, it, it, a lot of times comes down to the developer and, and the developer's intention. Here's just another example, that looks a lot different than anything we have, we have And another example where we have the, we have the little courtyard in the front, and this isn't even twenty feet, I'm sure it's less than that, but you see this a lot in cities, that it's small, but it's because it has a gate or, you know, a railing or something, it's, it provides a little separation, sort of a semi-public, you know, a transition from public on the sidewalk to semi-public, and then the entrance back here, so. Exterior, oh, so you go into this building in order to get upstairs, sometimes buildings you access upstairs from the outside, this is showing that just having, slapping on the stairway in front of the front door doesn't work, that they want it more integrated into the building, and, let's see, and then there's some details about just, you know, spiffing up the building a little bit, and that's, the, the green ones that I showed you with the backs to the street had no window trim, no freeze, which is the piece that you usually see on the top, no base, and we do require these things in our commercial design standards, we require the building, building have a base of a different material or different volume, and, and some trim, just to make it look good. Now, you know, and that's, if, if you're living, if you need an apartment, these things are extra, I guess, you know, on there, you know, that's, that's, it's not the critical thing. On the other hand, you know, we want these to be a place where, where somebody's proud to live, we want it to be a place that people don't mind having in their neighborhood, and so, you know, we have to find the right balance. I have just a couple other things, mechanical equipment and utility meters should be screened from street view, that's something we also require in commercial design standards. Bicycle parking is required, and I think now that we are almost at a point where that's required, you know, that's a state law, I could be wrong about that. And dog waste requires a plan and compliance with that plan, and rather than try to specify what that solution might be, in the ordinance, I say if you are going to allow dogs, or do allow dogs, then you need to figure out how you're dealing with dog waste, because we have had repeated complaints about, from neighbors of apartments, that, you know, a lot of big dogs live there and are running around the neighborhood and re, relieving themselves and making a general.
Little dogs make that, too, so.
Yeah, that's right, I didn't, I didn't just make it exclusively about big dogs. It's just all the size, the size of the problem, so, yep, this is just one that I think is, is quite attractive for a number of reasons, and I think that's the end, yes, that's, that's the end.
Maybe you could get rid of the word dogs and just use animals because cats have issues and grounds.
Well, yes, yes.
Deb, I think way back when you were just talking about density bonuses?
Yes.
I think you inadvertently passed the affordability one.
Oh, did I? Oh, I'm sorry, here, so, yeah, close your eyes for a minute, and we'll flip back here.
Where would you?
Density bonuses, oh, wait, there we go.
It is.
Okay, yes, as Richard mentioned earlier in our planned unit development ordinance, we allow a density bonus for affordable units, and we had this discussion, and I haven't come up with the right answer, and maybe we'll get some input that will help us. In the PUD ordinance, it says you get a bonus of extra units, and if at least half of the extra units are affordable, here I just said, you know, as long as they're affordable, you can have up to a ten percent affordable, or, I mean, a density bonus. Again, you know, we have to decide, is that something that's going to be attractive and used by developers, or do we have to make the incentive even better by saying some of them can be market rate, some of your density bonus can be market rate in order to buy ourselves some affordable units?
Is this rent control? How do you control this after the thing's built?
Well, do you have thoughts about that from the PUD ordinance?
There would have to be, like, a development agreement specifying that, that the units would remain affordable, and it can be done legally, then, you know, presumably at some point, there, there, a violation might come, come to our attention or something, but, it also can be, it can be market rate, it can just be small, you know, that, so they, they cost less than the bigger ones, or something like that, then you don't have.
They don't have the granite countertops, you know.
Follow-up kinds of issues.
Mr. Chair, it might be something to consider, be affordable, has to be a certain amount per square foot, and it can be over a certain amount per square foot.
Right.
Or I was thinking something like the mean income in the county, net minus taxes, and then thirty percent of that would be the maximum that you could charge for any unit.
Actually, yeah, in, the way it's written, it says it has to meet the city's affordability standard, and I, I, at one point, you and Allison, I think, had worked out something that you thought would be reasonable, I don't know how that's been implemented.
It hasn't been adopted, it's the eighty percent of, of median is what we're talking about, twenty-seven thousand two hundred.
I mean, they have places now that it's like a sliding scale, and they have it where if you, the, the rent is reduced based upon your, it's already reduced because you don't make over a certain amount of money, so.
Mm-hmm.
Subsidized housing. But it, it's not, it's not section eight, it's not HUD or anything, it's just you don't make more than this, and the rent's five hundred and fifty bucks for whatever.
Oh, the, the apartment owner has a sliding scale?
Right, that's what I mean, how is that different than that? I mean, I don't know.
Well, it wouldn't necessarily be.
Right.
Yeah, but that's something that we do need to be. But that's something that we do need to be clear about. And if we do need to adopt the affordability standard, then, you know, that would be a separate thing that we would have to do concurrently, I suppose.
Do we, how many buildable apartment lots do we still have in the city? Do we have a number of them, or?
Oh, we have, we have, we have quite a bit of multifamily. When we, and you were probably on the commission, when we rezoned property that we had annexed east of the lake. And it...
Did you say west?
No, I say east. But we had a, we had a fairly large area that, that had been in the county. And then the city, it became part of the city, but it was never rezoned. And we just did that, oh, in the last probably five years, probably five years ago. And a big chunk of that, we made RM, multifamily. I'm trying to think where we have other multifamily in town that is not developed.
There are, there are areas here and there. In 2006, when we did the Buildable Lands Inventory, one of the conclusions of that was that we were very close to having a shortage of RM-zone land. One of the sort of safety valves for that is for a planned unit development, you can build multifamily. And if you factor in some of the density bonuses you get, it can be a pretty substantial amount of density in a single-family zone.
So is that like the project that was up there off of Logan Road?
Right. The Logan Park, that was planned unit development. I think it had a mixture of different housing types.
And off of Voyage, they were talking about apartments.
Lincoln Palisades.
Yeah, Lincoln Palisades. They were talking about apartments in there. As long as they kept the underlying density okay, then they would basically cluster in apartments.
Down where the other big apartment areas on, off of Voyage, in that area?
The other end of Voyage.
The other end of Voyage.
North of the Palisades condos, is that what you're thinking about?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
There was a proposal for apartments in there. Even though that whole area was zoned for R1.
I remember, yeah, I remember. And we kind of put thumbs down on it.
Yeah, well, it had some issues, yeah.
In addition to these additions or establishments, do you have proposed violations of things that you, if they don't follow or they don't have a street access door or things like that? Do you have, what would happen if they don't follow the newly established rules?
Well, these would primarily apply to new buildings, new construction.
I understand that.
Or substantial renovations and that kind of thing. So, in which case then, when we get the plans, we say, yes, this meets our code or no, it doesn't. Now, for those that already exist, is that, is that what you?
No, it's not.
Oh, okay.
I'm only speaking of the new construction under the new guidelines.
What happens when somebody proposes a multifamily development or commercial development for that matter? Is that the first step is, well, usually a pre-application conference. Then they submit for a site plan review. And that is the staff function unless it requires some rezoning or, you know, other land use action. And so that gives the staff and the applicant a chance to work through all our requirements and make sure that the project as proposed meets it. If it doesn't, we can approve it with conditions that it does meet the requirements. And, or we can deny it. But generally, we try to work with the applicant on coming up with a project that works. And, and then we have inspections as it is under construction. Well, first of all, the building plans, once we do the site plan review, then they actually come in with building plans and it has, that has to meet the conditions. And then, and then we have inspections as it's under construction to make sure that it's being built according to the plans.
So let's say they pour a 25-foot wide side driveway, then what would you do?
Oh, rather than a 20, 20-foot one, you know, single-family, are we, are we best?
I mean, that's, I mean, are, would other things, you know, would other established what-haves come into play for that? I don't know what the word is.
Well, yes. For instance, if, when they are ready to pour their foundation, we send somebody out to check the setbacks.
Well, they're like right there.
Which is, set the check backs, yeah, check the setbacks.
Set the check backs?
Yeah. And as far as elevation, sometimes we have to check, you know, to make sure that first floor elevation is right if it's in a flood zone or something like that.
So throughout the process, there's a city employee there checking, I guess, ultimately?
Right, right. We send our building inspector out to check the construction and the planner goes out to check the setbacks and the height, make sure that it's not going to be too tall when it's ultimately constructed.
So I misled you on that 250-square-foot thing. It occurs to me that a triangle can have two 20-foot sides and one-third side is larger and it's...
Face times height, yeah.
It's 200, if it was a right triangle, it would be 200 square feet. So the 250 minimum still applies.
Okay, okay, good.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, let me get the circle in there.
Are we, are there any more questions for Deb? No, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We are under reports and comments. Community Development Director?
I have nothing at this time.
City Attorney?
Well, it was suggested that I talk about the legislative proceedings. I, and I didn't anticipate we'd be at eight o'clock when it got to me. So I'm going to leave it up to you. If you want to talk in general about legislative proceedings, I can say do it in 10 minutes. If you want to wait, I can do it another day.
Please, you're the commission.
I'd say let's do it another day.
Richard, another option might be to send them something that they could read.
Since you're going to be having a legislative hearing here next time, I'll, I'll send you a little memo.
Thank you.
I would like to, I don't know if I told you last time, but we prevailed in the Luba Appeal, the Emerald Cove LLC versus the City of Lincoln City. And this was the, you were sitting as the Vacation Rental Appeals Board. Importantly, in that decision, and I can talk some more about it in the memo I'll send you, the appeal was dismissed basically because we filed a motion to dismiss as part of our response because Luba found that the Vacation Rental Ordinance, Chapter 5.14, is not a land use ordinance, it's not a land use decision. So consistent with the decision earlier last year where we had the ordinance 2014-23, which was the License Ordinance Amendments for the VRD, they also threw that one out saying it's not a land development regulation. So, and that's important because a land development regulation is a regulation that implements your comprehensive plan. So in this case, they wanted to argue that it was a land development regulation because if they can argue successfully it's a land development regulation, they can then say that they're protected as a legal non-conforming use and therefore new laws don't apply to them. So that's important and in considering ordinances as they come forward. The argument that we made to Luba was that the occupancy limits on vacation rentals were fire life safety regulations, not land development regulations implementing your comprehensive plan. So with that, one other thing I should just say. There has been initiative petition filed on the issue of VRDs. It's going through the process. You may have seen the ballot titles published. Under 260, ORS 26432, city employees are prohibited from advocating for or against initiative measures. You all fall within the definition of city employees for that purpose. So on the job during working hours, you're not allowed to advocate for or against. So for that, it means here, when you're here, you don't argue for or against. And you don't go up to newspaper people and say, hi, I'm on the planning commission and here's my thing. So you just want to be careful about that.
Going on with that same thought, the City Council had quite a discussion about what was land use versus licensing and with, specifically with respect to the VRD ordinances that are being drafted at the moment. I'm, I'm concerned in that we have been quite public in our discussions given we've had work sessions, we've had emails and other conversations. If the land use component of those ordinances is going to come back to us, what, what going forward is our ex parte issue here?
Remember that going back to 2013, we had not just legislative land use rules of general applicability coming to you. We also had overlay zones, yes and no zone maps where the lines were moving. And because of that, because we had people advocating for moving the lines so my property was included or moving the lines so my property was not, and we were bringing them all together, we recommended in an abundance of caution that we follow the procedural safeguards that we follow during quasi-judicial procedures. Because quasi-judicial is it's about you, it's about a small number of properties. It's not generally the kind of thing you think about when we're doing legislation. It's not my understanding that we have any proposed maps coming forward. There may be an effort to change the text of a certain zone, I believe the R5 zone. So someone might argue that it's quasi-judicial, it's probably not. It's a text amendment to the, to zone. We're still going to have to follow Measure 56 notice. But I always recommend that if you're going to have conversations with people, you should have them in this room. I don't care if it's legislative or quasi-judicial. Frankly, you're not elected officials. You're appointed public officers and you're here in legislative proceedings to give recommendations, but you're not emperors of Rome. It's not this or this. You have a job to do. It's just a little different than your job during a quasi-judicial proceeding. You're still reviewing the proposals for consistency with the comprehensive plan, for consistency with the statewide planning goals. You have a job to do. And so when people come to you outside of these proceedings, number one, they're disadvantaging themselves because they're not getting their comments in the record. And remember, in order to have standing, you have to participate in a meaningful way in order to file an appeal to Luba of a legislative land use proceeding. So when people want to talk to you outside this, I'm not going to tell you for legislative proceedings you can't talk to people, but I recommend that you direct them so that their participation is meaningful. They come to the meeting and they participate in a meaningful way. They then have standing. So I think the best thing you could do is try to get them to get their thoughts down on paper and get them submitted for the record and come to the meetings and testify. Again, I'm not going to, the rules are you can, you can have ex parte if it's legislative, but that doesn't help them much. So with that, I can reserve...
Planning Commissioners, any other reports and comments? And we've done public comments. So future agenda items and next meetings. On March 1st, we have a public hearing on land use ordinances, ZOA 201601, miscellaneous zoning ordinance amendments.
Mr. Chair, those are the first things I talked about, the flashing sign, the...
So that's not going to be the next meeting?
It will be the next meeting.
Well, I was just going to read what was going to be. I was just reading what was on here.
Okay, yeah, I was just explaining that the miscellaneous on here is those first three things I talked about, the flashing signs, the administrative adjustment, and the initiation of amendments.
Thank you.
And can we tell people where to find those online? Kate?
Yes, they're on the city website. If you just go to the search line and type in draft ordinances, it will take you to a link that will bring you right to the page where you can look at all of the ordinances that we're talking about.
Thank you. So, yes, the March 1st meeting will be covering that. Retail marijuana stores, multiple family residential standards. On March 15th, 2016, we're having a public hearing on proposed amendments to the Municipal Code and Comprehensive Plan, all related to implementation of the 2015 Lincoln City Transportation System Plan. And we are adjourned.